I have to shut the door, excuse me. Hi Pam. Hi Tom.
Good evening.
Mayor, before we start, I'd like to comment on Alderman Frerick's background. It is the best.
Yeah, that one.
There's two things that I need you to call me about, Terry, that will be one of them. Anyway, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting in Monticello City Council to order. Can I have a roll call, please Pam? Pam, Jill?
You can do it if you want. All right, Mr. Frericks.
Here.
Ms. Harland.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Boat.
Here.
Mr. Brock. Mr. Brock, you there?
He's there, I can see.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Woo. And Mr. Coon.
Here.
Hey, we have a quorum. Ms. Stevens is absent.
Thank you very much. Public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer, the mayor. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference, submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Public comments must comply with all adopted rules and be limited to five minutes or less. The city clerk will arrange to have one email or voicemail per person presented for up to five minutes each. Web conference participants should ask to be recognized for public comment by using the chat function. Access to city hall and council chambers will not be permitted. Please provide any comments in one of the available means listed above. Is anyone requesting public comment this evening? Public participation? Mr. Schrepler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I understand the initial sense of urgency to look into the North State Street property, and I understand that's probably off the table now, but I don't think that the the whole plan is completely dead, and I question the wisdom of contemplating expenditure now with with the COVID hit that you're going to take from revenues and so forth. And so I would I would ask you not to move forward with that. I know it's on the agenda for a couple of the the items tonight. It just doesn't seem prudent to to do that. I mean, we've had years and years to consider this, and I think the timing is absolutely terrible. And and I would just encourage you to put that on hold until things settle out a bit. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone interested in public participation? Third time, anyone interested in public participation? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items as listed. Claims report. Claims dated May 12 through May 26, 2020. Meeting minutes. City council meeting minutes, May 11, 2020. City council closed session meeting minutes, May 11, 2020. Budget report, April 2020. Treasurer's report, April 2020. My recommendation for the following to be pointed to the Historic Preservation Commission for three-year terms, being Judy Green and Luana Miller. Their terms will expire in 2023. My recommendation to reappoint planning and zoning board member Elaine Yun to another five-year term, which will expire in April 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Who was that? Who's second?
I'll second. John Frerick.
John Frerick. Who moved? Tom Reed?
Pam Harlan.
Pam, I'm sorry. The screen. I didn't want to look at this. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Frerick.
Quick question.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, it's okay. I just wanted to ask Terry about, see how the meter replacement was going.
Actually, the meter replacement is going very well. We've got some meters placed kind of at strategic locations, so we can do kind of a dry run and check on those meters. One of them's at the Public Works Director's house, so we're keeping an eye on on the functionality of them. But so far, our water department loves the meters and the water billing clerk.
Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else have a comment or question? I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Not seeing anyone else. Can I have a roll call now, please, Jill?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock? Mr. Brock? Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. This evening, I have the pleasure to make a mayoral proclamation. Mental Health Month 2020. Tools to thrive. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life, it can impact their mental health, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and have a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Larry Stoner, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Mental Health Month in Monticello, Illinois. As the mayor of the city of Monticello, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the city of Monticello to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. I set my signature on here on the fifth day, the 26th day of May 2020. Continuing. The St. Jude-Monticello-to-Pioria Run will look a little different this year, as they will not actually be running to the St. Jude Telethon at the Peoria Civic Center. Instead, runners will be maintaining small numbers and distance in accordance with social distancing guidelines and running through some local neighborhoods here in Monticello on July 17 and 18. They will have their trademark music band and sheriff escort following the runners. They will release the times for each neighborhood as the events get closer. I know they are really hoping that by doing this, they may increase their local presence. The group last year raised $70,000 for the St. Jude Children's Hospital. And thanks to many, from Tricia. Continuing my report, upon application by downtown restaurants and bars, the city will begin assembly of downtown parklets, an outdoor seating option that will fill the parking spaces adjacent to the business. This will allow the downtown businesses the opportunity to serve more patrons with the Phase 3 standards in place and more visitors to our downtown. Tune into WCIA Channel 3 for our town Monticello coverage all week. The week will wrap up with a live broadcast in downtown for CI Living and the newscast Friday evening, and a half-hour spotlight on the community at 6:30 PM. Please support your local businesses and be patient with them as they slowly are allowed to expand their services beginning this Friday. Okay, let's move on to old business. Resolution 2020-24, resolution approving the engagement of Farms Ruth Group Incorporated. We talked about this at the last meeting. What's your pleasure? Is there a motion either to pass or a motion to not pass?
I think, Mr. Mayor, in light of our option not to pursue the building on North State Street, I think at this time, we should hold off on any studies until we get past the COVID and and then be able to regroup and make a plan. We, at the time, we had a, we had kind of a time constraint, and now we don't.
So am I assuming that we do not have to consider these resolutions this evening? Don't all talk at once. Terry, is that okay?
Um, I think just for clarity, Mr. Mayor, you may want to just either make a motion and it dies for a second, or make a motion and go ahead and vote on the, on this, these two resolutions separately.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we vote on these one at a time? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-24?
I have a question.
Yes.
Don't they have to be untabled first? Were they tabbed?
No, they're all business. We can just bring them up. It's old. We're just bringing it up off the table. That's what we're supposed to do. Okay? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-24? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-24? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move on to Resolution 2020-25. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-25?
So we don't need to vote on either one? We don't need to vote on either one of these?
Is there, no. If no one moves on it, they're dead. Nothing happens. Okay? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-25? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-25? Hearing or seeing none, both issues, as far as I'm concerned, are done with. We're through with them. Okay, at this time, I would like to move into a public hearing for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, and I'll turn this over to Kelly McFarland.
Thank you, Mayor. For the fifth time, we're going to be applying for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, so forgive the verbiage that we have to state at the public hearing, which you've heard twice already. The state of Illinois has reallocated community development block grants in the amount of $20 million to be used for the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Grant Program, providing financial assistance to businesses impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Counties and municipalities which are designated as non-entitlements may apply on behalf of ineligible business for funding in the form of a grant. The funds may not exceed $25,000 per business and must be used for working capital expenses based upon 60 days of estimated costs once the business is opened up or resumes full operation. City staff wishes to present an application for Monticello Red Wheel Incorporated requesting $25,000. This amount will cover working capital expenses such as rent, utilities, inventory, and payroll. The business must reopen or return to normal operation within one year of the notice of grant award, should we receive it. The business must also provide documentation and proof of payment for eligible expenses for reimbursement, as well as the closeout reporting of the grant, which the city is responsible for. The city of Monticello prides itself in supporting local businesses where possible. One of the consistent goals is to promote and encourage fair housing and business practices within the community in both present and future development. The health and continuation of our local businesses is a direct reflection on our local economy. The applicant has had to provide their January expenses for the application, which is doubled to determine the amount for the 60 days. So to review the applicant, again, it's Monticello Red Wheel located at 803 Iron Horse Place, which is at the North Interchange, excuse me. It is an independently owned restaurant and bar that has been a business since opening in the community in 2003, normally employing six full and part-time individuals. The business is considered essential. However, most of the traffic caters to the interstate, and with no drive-through service available, they've been severely impacted negatively in the amount of service they can provide. However, the owner has been offering delivery service. Total January expenses were $13,394, so we are asking for the maximum grant award of $25,000, again, to cover rent, payroll, utility, and inventory. The business has provided all the necessary documents for the grant application. Notice of the public hearing was published in the May 13 edition of the Piatt County General Publican, and the application has been available for the public review since May 18. No public comment has been brought to our attention. Again, if anyone wishes to speak, please identify yourself and which area you're representing, business owner, resident, and so forth.
Does anyone wish to make a comment? Or ask a question? Does anyone wish to make a comment? Third and final time, does anyone wish to make a comment? Hearing or seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving on to Resolution 2020-26. A resolution approving support of Red Wheel within the Downstate Small Business Stabilization Program. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-26?
Will move.
Thank you, Rodney. Is there a second?
Second.
That was John Frericks. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, Jill, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris? I did too. Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on. Resolution 2020-27, a resolution authorizing spending of funds from the Monticello Business District in response to the COVID-19 impact on downtown Monticello. Kelly, Joe, do you have information for us?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday, Governor Pritzker announced regulations and guidelines in regards to going to Phase 3 reopening Illinois and really putting the, or encouraging local municipalities to figure out how they can work with their local businesses to get more traffic down there. With our local bars and restaurants, or all bars and restaurants in Illinois, they can actually have service outside, which is kind of a challenge for a lot of businesses that don't have that outdoor space. We have some in our downtown that just have two seats or two tables, two tables, but they have to be six feet apart, excuse me, and no more than six per table. So knowing that this was coming, Shelley Crawford Stock with the Chamber and Main Street and I have been kind of planning how we can get some, address this so that our businesses will have more than two people, or two tables to serve. And the idea of a parklet came up. It's not a new concept, and Mary, you touched on it earlier in your report. It's basically a way to artificially grow your seating capacity. So you're giving them more outspace. And as you can imagine with the name parklet, it takes up parking spaces. So what the city will be constructing on Thursday and Friday of this week is any bar and restaurant in downtown that does not have the ability to expand in the park or in an outside area, meaning they have no private, or no private property outside their building. We're going to be inviting them to apply, which some of them have already, and the city will be creating a downtown area in front of their business, about three parking spaces or so forth. And with pedestrian fencing, we have some larger planter boxes. There are the wood boxes that we're getting from the depot. So it'll make a very delineated area. They're responsible for providing their own tables. The city could provide picnic tables, but because the picnic tables are pretty large, that will limit how many tables they can have. But as you can imagine, in downtown, especially going into summer, we have some sunshine quite often. And so one of the things the city wanted to do was provide a cantilever umbrella of sorts to each business that would be anchored to the ground. That way, we don't have to worry about it blowing off, hopefully. But the city is proposing purchasing 11 patio umbrellas. The city is purchasing 11 patio umbrellas, but proposing it be funded through the business district. It's an eligible expense. It helps promote more people into our downtown during more more conditions, and that's certainly what we want to invite and encourage. The 11 patio umbrellas are, the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution says it costs not to exceed $4,000. I can tell you, it's about $3,200, I believe. And again, we're proposing or asking the council to fund that through the business district. After use in the parklets, the umbrellas would have the ability to be installed in other places in the community as it relates to city parks.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Kelly, Joe?
I have one. How is that? How will that affect the curbside pickup? How are they going to work that out?
Right. So the first thing is, the business, they know that they would be losing the spaces in front of their building. So we're working with the Chamber on some signage on an alternate pickup spot, and then the business has agreed to communicate better. So either we'll text you or you text us when when your order is ready, and there'll be a designated space. Won't be directly in front of the store. It might be, you know, at the end of the block or so forth, but it's an option we're providing.
I have a couple, I have a couple of questions. My first question is, it talks about options to have branding placed on them for consistency. Does that mean branding to the city of Monticello?
So we are kind of all under the umbrella of Make It Monticello now, and that's all encompassing, whether it's from tourism or chamber, main street, or business development, or residential growth, or schools. And so that's, we're hoping, it just depends on when they come in. We're hoping we can get that Make It Monticello brand on there, just so that it designates that this is a city, you know, thing.
Also, the second question I have is, I guess, since there's no parking, I'm assuming they'll still be driving through the downtown. Is there any extra caution signs, cones, rope that are going to be around these parklets? Just to kind of ensure that there's more careful driving while there's pedestrians out in the street like that?
Sure. So in between the vehicle traveling and the seating area, there will be pedestrian fencing. Chief Carter was comfortable with that situation. It's only a 200-foot block. And while, we want to make sure it's evident that there is something there. You know, I think it'll be more visible than when a car's backing out normally. You'll be able to see, because you won't have those barriers there.
And then. Go ahead, sir. Sorry, my last question was, have we talked with the business owners, the restaurants, about this potential purchase to make sure that, I mean, obviously, they're not going to turn it down. I mean, I just, I want to make sure too, that is there anything else that they need, you know, that we're not spending an arm and leg, but we can continue to help? And if this is one item that they do appreciate, which I'm sure they will, I mean, what's the feedback from the restaurants right now? What else could they, you know, besides more sales and things like that, more customers, obviously, these parklets are going to help? I mean, what, are you hearing anything else in addition to that, these things, that they could be, that they need right now?
Yeah, I think the main thing right now is they just want to know what their options are. There's so much uncertainty out there. I think there's a misconception that everyone, while we're all so anxious to get out, there's a, there's, you know, this idea that everyone's just going to run out and spend money, and that's simply not true, because in addition to that population that really wants to get out, you also have the population that is still cautious and is, you know, going to wait until they feel safe to do so. So we are, if not at least once a day, Shelley and I are meeting with Mike Schroeder and relaying all sorts of information on the guidelines in terms of operation from a retail or a restaurant or a bar, and then what to expect from their clientele, just to make sure everybody is familiar with that. We haven't really heard anything as it relates to what we need. We made sure they understand this is totally voluntary. We just want to create the, or not really create the impression, because it's true. We want to give the impression that our downtown will be open starting Friday beyond what it has been, because our businesses really could use this boost, no matter what they are.
And I thought, and I have, I'm sorry, I have one more question. How do we determine the number 11 umbrellas? Like, I mean, did we get a confirmation from certain restaurants? Because I know some of them that did have outdoor seating also had their own umbrellas. Was there an objection or support in that they would want the umbrellas versus using their own?
No. So what we started with, because the areas that we're looking at, it's a 10-foot wide canopy, so it's not going to cover the entire thing. They are encouraged to provide their own if they have it. We wanted something that was a little more fixed, and they didn't have to worry about taking down every time. We came up with the number 11, because there's 11 businesses that could benefit from the parklet idea, and it's as simple as that. We probably will have some leftover, because I think there's a couple that won't do it. And if that's the case, I know all three restaurants on Charter Street are going to be doing this, and they probably could use a couple more than just the one per business. So I think we'll, we'll probably see a few more than that, but I think 11 is enough for now.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Kelly.
Pam, did you have something? No. Rodney?
I did, and it's dumb, but I hate to, I hate to even ask it. Have we checked into liability? God forbid, somebody should be driving down there and take out a a table. Who's liable for that? Is that us?
Absolutely. So as part of their application for a parklet, they sign a Hold Harmless Agreement with the city and an Indemnification Agreement with the city, and we require a certificate of insurance, listing us as additional insured.
That's because you guys are really good at your jobs.
Mary?
I was just wondering if any consideration had been given, you know, you had mentioned the picnic tables might be too large for the parklet, but what about putting them around the courthouse on on the interior of the square, so then, I mean, that's not seating directly in front of the restaurants, but additional seating for maybe any overflow.
That's a good idea, and I think you'll see that later on. We wanted to give this a couple of weeks ago. Our other, our other big point of communication, we don't see a problem with the social distancing, and the health department said they're not going to be, you know, staring down at the business owners and making sure that you're exactly six feet away, and that's table to table, not back to back. But we encourage them to come up with some type of hybrid reservation policy, so you don't have people standing in a queue waiting in line. So maybe they give their number and they get a text when they're 10 minutes out. But to your point, one of the ideas was they could go sit across the street on the Um, but, uh, to your point, one of the ideas was they could go sit across the street on the courthouse lawn or something like that. Um, we're going to be doing, most likely, we're going to be doing, uh, um, Friday evening events coming up too, um, where we can expand, close the street and expand the number of tables, which we would implement more picnic tables as well.
And, and that's kind of what I was envisioning, like the Monticello celebration, the, the first Friday events where, where there is some closing of the streets, and, and of course, we want that every day.
Yeah, we're, we're not really supportive of, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're, we're not big fans of closing the entire street, just because we want people to see that there are things going downtown, and to do that, they need to drive through. However, um, like you said, if you have kind of a bigger event without a dense event, um, there's definitely benefit in Shelley and I working on that one.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
Are these being offered to any other restaurants or businesses that are not in the downtown area, even though they might have private parking and don't require a parklet?
Um, so the idea of a parklet is it takes up public parking?
So. Understand, but I mean, you're doing the umbrella, right?
Yeah.
So you're providing an umbrella to some, why not others?
We could, but again, this, the idea was to provide immediate space and to, and to kind of create a, a more designated area, and we thought the umbrella might help with that. We are working with, um, a couple of the other businesses that have the private space, um, with picnic tables and pedestrian fencing as well. So they haven't yet asked for an umbrella, um, but I, if we have some leftover, I don't know why we wouldn't offer it to them to use.
Just a question.
Absolutely. I appreciate all the questions.
Anyone else? Uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash twenty seven, uh, a resolution authorizing spending of funds from the Monticello Business District in response to the COVID nineteen impact on downtown Monticello. Is there a motion?
So moved, so moved.
Thank you, Mike, and John Freericks seconded. Any, any comments or questions before we proceed? That's strange talking. Not saying, Joe, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Freericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Miss Voe?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Comes up.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's not coming.
And Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have, uh, aldermen's reports. Tom Reed?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Wendell Brock? Nothing. Mike Kuhn?
Nothing.
Thank you, Mary Voe?
Nothing tonight.
John Freericks?
A couple of things. Number one, I just, I wanna know how Rodney Burris stole Wendell Brock's internet. What happened there? I mean, we're, we're glad to have you, Rodney. We're glad to have you. Um, and second of all, um, super, super awesome idea with the parklet. Um, and, and, and then just to piggyback off that comment is, um, kind of why I asked Kelly, just, you know, you know, those businesses, you know, we can get, carry out all day long, but we know there's still a struggle, uh, that's happening with those businesses, and, you know, whether they convey it or not, they, they're doing a heck of a job, I think, you know, still getting their food out. Um, so, you know, Kelly, please, please keep us in the loop if there's, um, you know, anything big or small that you hear from these businesses, um, that we could do to help them out, you know, continuously, um, in any way that is going to be allowable for us to, to help. Uh, we, I, I certainly, for one, I can't speak of everybody, would, would definitely love to do that, so. Um, and then I did have a comment. I'm, I'm thinking this maybe is more along lines of, uh, Chief Carter's, uh, department, perhaps. I just know there's, you know, as we get into spring and, and, uh, we're already into May, warm weather and stuff, but, um, I, when you drive around, sometimes you see a couple properties, um, that, that tend to kind of get let go, or, uh, there are tractors or dumpsters parked probably when they shouldn't be and things like that. I was just curious, you know, what's kind of our protocol, uh, for, uh, scoping out these particular properties and, uh, following up with them to make sure that, that, you know, they, they are complying to the beautification, uh, standards that they should be. So, um, you don't necessarily need a, a, a quick response, but if, I, I think that falls in the, in Chief Carter's department, but maybe he can shed some more, more light on that. But that's all the report I have.
If I may, I can, I can address that right now. There are several places, like you said, here in town. Uh, and we do have a list of those that we're working with. Uh, one individual today got a, a city citation because they did not follow through with the abatement process. Um, and so they received citations totaling two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars based on the violations in their yard. Uh, we do have another one that we're working with a, um, real estate company because they, the individual doesn't live there, uh, and we're trying to, uh, get that yard taken care of. But we do have, like I said, we do have a list of them. Uh, if you know of other ones, if you'll send us the address, we'll get on it. But it's not a quick fix. It does take at least eleven days based on the ordinance of the abatement.
Understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pam Harlan?
I just had a quick question for Terry. I was at, I mean, I was at Dairy Queen, and all of that concrete behind their restaurant is torn up from that streetscape project. Do we know why?
Um, I think you're talking about, um,
Maybe True Value, I don't know.
Yeah, True Value did some work. They had to make a, a connection, and, and I, I apologize. I can't remember if it was storm sewer or sanitary sewer, um, but they had to cut that pavement out, and then, uh, I believe I saw a concrete truck there last week making that repair.
So we, do we oversee to make sure it meets whatever guideline was? I mean, that was just done, and it was looking so nice, and do we check on it at all?
Yeah, we, we will check on, you know, the water department. If it's a water service, we, we inspect it and approve it before they backfill. Similar with sanitary sewer and, and storm sewer, and then we inspect that the subgrade gets compacted, uh, accordingly, and then that six-inch-thick concrete being poured back.
Okay, I just noticed it, and I was like, that was such a shame because it was, it looked so nice. So I hope it is gonna be repaired nicely.
That all, Pam? Thank you. Rodney?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, though.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, Chief Carter, do you have a report this evening?
I have nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening? Thank you very much. Uh, city administrator Terry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a couple of things, um, to, um, alderman votes, uh, or alderwoman votes, concerns, or, or comments about the, um, inside of, of the downtown square adjacent to the courthouse. Keep in mind that all the sidewalks have to be maintained for that safe passage of four feet, or now probably six feet. So, um, some of the sidewalks, we just can't impede that safe passage on. And, and I think, you know, I think Kelly and, and we're all looking at this to be a, you know, an, an everyday over a two-month period, so, you know, it's not something similar to like a Friday night little, uh, festivity. This is every day for a couple of months, so we're really looking forward to it. Um, and to that, I'd like to, um, commend, I cannot commend, uh, this group of people I'm gonna speak of enough for everything that, that they did to put in to make this thing, um, happen. Um, and those indivi-, I'll probably miss somebody, so I apologize already. Um, but, uh, Community Economic Development, Kelly Joe McFarland, the new Main Street Director slash Chamber of Commerce Director, Shelley Crawford Stock, Police Chief John Carter, uh, Public Works Director Jim Gabarsik, and D-Witt Piatt, uh, Bye County Health Department, uh, Michael Schroder. These guys and, and gals did a fabulous job putting this together, and and, and they were out in front of it anticipating that, uh, at some point in time, we'd get to phase three, and lo and behold, here we are. So, uh, tip my hat to all those individuals. Job well done. And then, um, Public Works Department, uh, speaking with, about, uh, Alderwoman Harland's comments about all the work done on that alley by the Dairy Queen. The guys are also, uh, currently working on the alley behind these four walls down to CF and H Alley. And it includes, uh, new water services, storm sewers, um, pavement. Uh, sanitary sewer was slip-lined a couple of years ago. It's a very tight, tight space, and it has a lot of foreign utilities in it provided, uh, by CCG and Ameren IP. And, uh, it's ten-foot-wide alley, and that mini excavator to turn around is about nine feet, eleven and three-quarters inches. So it is very tight, and, uh, the guys, um, they've worked on all the alleys. This is the last alley to be done. It's been on, uh, postponed, I think, for probably three different budgets. So, um, congratulations to tho- got, those guys. They've got, uh, a lot of work ahead of them, and they're doing a great job. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions of Terry? Hearing or seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will move.
Will move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you all for a nice meeting this evening. See you in two weeks, I think, the same way, probably, right, Terry?
Uh, yeah, I, I would anticipate, uh, June eighth and June twenty-second to be, uh, very similar to tonight.
Thank you all. Good evening.